As well.
I can take that, Carolyn.
Thank you, Jake. I appreciate that very much. We'll go ahead and start with an invocation, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll go ahead and have the honor of doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Jake.
Part your kind and gracious heavenly father, we're thankful for the opportunity, and leaders of this great city of Linden, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to live here and raise our families here. We ask a special blessing at this time for moisture that we may continue to be blessed in that aspect. We're thankful for the small storm that we received today. We're thankful for our first responders, for all that they do. Please bless and protect them, watch over them always. We're thankful for those who are coming before us tonight. We ask that thy spirit be here that we will make wise decisions and good decisions for everyone, and especially for the city. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jake. Will you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jake. We're going to go ahead and start. So at the beginning of each meeting, we have what's called an open session. There's a list of the agenda there on the table. So anything that someone would like to address the council, they're welcome to come up to this table. That is not on the agenda as listed. So this would be the time that we'd like to open that to the public. Oh, roll call. I apologize. We'll do that. I mean, I went a little bit out of order. I apologize. We need to just go ahead and take a seat there.
Take a seat. We'll get right to you.
One more. Thank you for clarification, my error. We just need to do our quick roll call, and we'll just start over here.
Jake Hoyt, present.
Randy Powell, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Van Broderick, present.
Carolyn, before you go, we need a motion to move those items to the back of the agenda.
We were going to suggest going into the, oh, that's right, because we're in approval of minutes. Okay.
I don't even know if that we technically need a motion. We just need to acknowledge that in the minutes.
And the Roberts rules, right?
So we're moving items two, three, four, five, seven. Is that right, Jake?
We're going, yes, two through seven. Well, open session, we will do still. We're going to still do open session for those in the committee that are here. So two, three, four, five, and seven. So with council approval here, just make note, we're going to, due to some time constraints, later on in the meeting, we're going to move those to later in the agenda. But we did want to give anyone in the public here the opportunity to address the council at this time.
Yes, thank you.
Right there with a microphone would be great.
I've attended many council meetings, not here, but many council meetings, and we've always had the Pledge of Allegiance. But what a wonderful thing to start with an opening prayer. Thank you. That was wonderful. Council members, Mayor Athersen, thank you for the opportunity to address you this afternoon. I thank Councilmember Lundberg for inviting me to share my thoughts with you. Thank you, Carolyn, and congratulations on your new grandchild.
Thank you.
Linden is a beautiful place, but it may not remain that way unless city officials take steps to ensure its continued attractiveness. As I wrote to you last week, because the city lacks a full-time dedicated code enforcement officer, the consequences of this deficiency are readily apparent. Throughout the city are ramshackle properties with junk and debris in full public view. Inoperable, rusty, old cars with flat tires, dents, and broken windows can be seen on driveways and parked on side lawns. Outdoor sheds and storage units filled to overflowing spill out onto gardens and lawns. Weeds many feet tall can be seen. Some houses have severe peeling paint and structural deterioration, with roofs long past their replacement dates. Decrepit barns and decayed farm structures built decades ago are beyond recognition. These are just some of the actual cases which I myself have reported to the city, and the reaction from the city has not been encouraging. Responses have come only after repeated inquiries. This should not be surprising since the code enforcement function is currently spread across three departments, with complaints handled by city staff only after completing their full-time job assignments. This needs to change. Linden needs a full-time code enforcement officer who will vigorously enforce the municipal code. This code enforcement officer should proactively search out properties which are eyesores. Residents who allow their properties to fall into disrepair are disrespectful of their neighbors. Inconsiderate property owners inflict their indifference and disregard on those who care for and take pride in their yards and vehicles. Blighted properties throughout the city would be marketed reduced with an energetic, focused, and highly motivated code enforcement officer. Until such an individual can be employed, Linden may want to follow the lead of Orem, which until July 1 of this year had their neighborhood preservation unit staffed by police officers. The NPU is now housed within the community development office. Yes, Linden is a beautiful place, but the continuation of its attractiveness and livability is dependent on city officials enforcing the standards as defined in the municipal code. I urge the council to act swiftly and decisively in authorizing the hiring of a full-time code enforcement officer. Those were my prepared remarks, and I'll be really brief. I came in a few minutes before and I spoke with Mr. Cowie, Adam, and we chatted a bit, and I explained what I was going to present this evening. And he said, well, we don't want big government, and I couldn't agree more. We don't, no one wants big, heavy-handed government to tell people what to do. But by the same token, if there are not reasonable standards of decency and appropriateness, then over the long run, the city, in my view, is going to suffer for that deficiency. What would be a case in point? I was downstairs earlier this afternoon with Mr. Bake, Anders Bake. And according to the municipal code, only motorized vehicles can be enforced according to the code. And perhaps city council or an attorney hired by the city needs to, and I mentioned this to Adam, needs to revise the code or update it, or look at other communities and see what standards they have. And maybe it's not just motorized vehicles, for example, but un-motorized vehicles, any vehicle. I gave him a case in point. There is an old, rusty horse trailer sitting next to a decrepit, old, inoperable car. The car can be taken into account, but the horse trailer cannot because it's not motorized. Another case in point I mentioned with Adam is I explained that on one particular street, there's a completely abandoned boarded-up house. Paint hasn't touched that house in decades. And he said, well, we really can't force people to paint their homes. Well, that may be something that the city may want to think about, is perhaps upgrade the code such that there are certain standards so that there is a basic, minimal baseline for how homes and yards ought to appear. And again, my only concern is that in the long, in the short run, may not make a big difference, but as the city grows, as the population ages, there are undoubtedly going to be more of these situations of untended, blighted, visually eyesore properties. And I think that's something that Linden doesn't deserve and that should be addressed. Thank you for your time and attention.
Before you go, thank you very much. For the record, Mr. Watkins, could you state your full name and address, please?
Stan Watkins, and I live in San Mateo, California.
Okay. Thank you so much. So for, what is it about Linden that brought you here and noticed?
We have relatives here. We stay many months, excuse me, we stay many weeks of the year here. We have many relatives in Utah County. And we are considering, we have considered perhaps moving to Utah County, including Linden where we have family. But as I get out and about, what I see impacts what I want to do. And so when I see, as I mentioned in my email, one yard will have Linden Yard of the Month, and yet, just a few paces down the road, you see a property that I doubt anyone would really want to move next to because it's completely untended, and it's a very, very discouraging, unsightly property. So that's what really prompted me to think about. Well, if I were to move here, I certainly wouldn't want to move next to certain properties. And anyway, I just think that in the long run, that the city would be benefited by someone who is purely focused on it. Mr. Cowie mentioned that there are budgetary issues, which I fully understand and appreciate. But I think in the long run, if you take, it's currently divided among three units. If there were one person currently, Orem has a number of code enforcement, excuse me, neighborhood preservation officers. And I know they're about 10 times larger than Linden, but I think Linden would be greatly benefited by an individual to focus on having these blighted properties abated.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and I was speaking also before the meeting with Councilmember Powell, with her background and my background similar in some cases. And it's just, I just, I don't, we all want to live next to properties that are, that are, that are well-cared-for. They don't have to be beautiful. They don't have to win awards. And I understand that Linden is, it's not an urban center. It's suburban, and it's even rural in some areas. I understand that fully. But I think that even those people that have rural properties ought not to be indifferent to certain base standards that ought to be developed by the council in terms of what is acceptable and not, in terms of livability and attractiveness of properties.
All right. Thank you very much. Well noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Watkins, I'm also interested to know that this is something that we, as a council, we're very aware of our need to have a code enforcement officer. Not only is it a budgetary issue, which we have the funds for, it's finding somebody who will take the job in this economy. The employment pool is very shallow, if it does exist at all, in this particular category. And to find somebody who will do a good service for our citizens, we have not been able to find somebody at this particular junction. So this is something I care about deeply, as my fellow council members do as well. So we take this responsibility, making sure our city is lovely on every regard possible. And so I appreciate you taking the time and the energy and exercising just your rights as a citizen in the United States of America and pointing some attention our way. I appreciate your time and energy. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's anyone else here who wishes to address the council on an item that is not listed on the agenda, this is the time. All right. All right. With that in mind, then, we're going to go, as noted before, straight to item number eight. We're going to first start with a public hearing, so I'd like to...
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Go ahead.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. We are now in a public hearing, and we'll go ahead and learn about the general plan map amendment that is being proposed this evening. And you're welcome to come up there. So Kent Nita, okay. Your name is well, sir?
James Bolington.
Okay, fantastic. All right, Mike, we'll turn it over to you here.
Thank you, council members. This evening, I included both items in your, in the one staff report, but there's two separate agenda items. So first thing is the, will be, there's a proposal to amend the general plan and also the zoning map. The applicants originally for these two properties, this is Linden Park Drive, 400 South, these two properties, the applicants originally requested to change the general plan land use designation to mixed use, and the zoning map amendment to mixed use. The planning commission, as they considered this, since this property is already has a land use designation, the general plan is commercial, they thought it would be better to have both properties as commercial designation. And then they requested that the, or they recommended that the map, zoning map be changed to regional commercial instead of mixed use. As they reviewed the allowed uses and design standards in the zoning ordinance, they felt that the general commercial zone was more compatible with the surrounding business park. That business park's been there for many years. It's well-maintained, great architecture, simple architecture, but it's great architecture. And so they felt like the regional commercial zone was more compatible with that. In your staff report, we provided you a list of the planned commercial, the regional, or research and business, and the mixed commercial zones. You could kind of compare those. I think in working with the applicants, they have marketed this property for some time and felt like the research and business zone, they were running into problems in trying to find uses that met our zoning. If you do notice, there are a lot of ends up there that doesn't allow many uses. It's mainly meant for primarily office uses with some secondary warehousing and research and development type activities in those existing buildings. The applicants are proposing to office warehouse buildings on the site. You can kind of see the layout of these two buildings here. The one concern staff would have is semi-truck traffic. Now, you do get some with transport vehicles to the dealership to the west, Home Depot to the south. We just want to make sure that it circulated properly, that it didn't end up going over here into the residential neighborhood. But this, this site plan would allow a circulation back out to Linden Park Drive. The other thing was the rendering, just, and we can, if you want, we can pull up the kind of the renderings for, or existing buildings in that zone. And so that was one thing, is making sure the building's compatible with that surrounding business park. And the improvements from the, from the two car dealerships are being upgraded. So with that, that was kind of just an overview. I believe the applicants would like to address the council and the mayor as well.
Let me just, a comment to this point? Is that right? Is that right? Okay. So we, I actually do, I'm with Colliers as well, and I have marketed the property just to the north at Canopy for years. And as they've kind of, they've explored doing an office building there, they've explored doing, you know, had it on the market for dealerships, and with the zone, it's made it restrictive. And then on the office use, it's, it's not a great office location. The Canopy parks, their vacancy is fair, you know, or their occupancy. And so what this allows is, on this end too, what we're seeing a lot in our market is, on the office warehouses, it's a retailer type up front, and then their warehousing, because of, as what's transitioning from mid-sized boxes from like your Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and those type users, is there more online retailers, where they have a small retail presence up front, and then they occupy in the back as their warehousing. So they still have oftentimes a small retail presence, and then they have their warehousing in the back. And so that's something that's very interesting to us on, for instance, Utah Trix is a company, they have a, they're, we just relocated, relocated to Springville. Well, they took an office warehouse, they have a retail up front, and then they do some assembly in the back. And then, but a large chunk of their sales is online sales. So there's, hopefully, when we're talking, for the city of Linden, there's still an opportunity for retail sales dollars, their sales tax dollars. The product that we're trying to match, it's a concrete tilt-up, similar to the office buildings you have just to the north. And so the two buildings, if you look, there's, let's see here, so it'd be the similar construction, and, I mean, it's, I guess, all by opinion, I think these buildings will look every bit as nice as the ones just to the right there. Yes, right there. So those are the same type of construction that the office warehouse will be. And with the exception on the rear, the rear of the building, that they will actually be butted up against each other. So ideally, those driving by will see more of the retail front than the actual, the back where they have a loading dock and some grade level doors.
And these are ground-level doors? I mean, there's no dock doors?
They will have a couple dock, they'll have dock doors in grade level.
And what would be the square footage of the proposed units for those office space and warehouse space?
So it happens is, it's built on an office, and then it's kind of built out accordingly depending on the tenant. So for instance, we tried to match, we talked with Michael and his staff when we're kind of going with the regional commercial, similar to what you've done off of Pleasant Grove Boulevard, where it's, it's been, it seems to be a good thing for the city in the sense that the office tenants are there, Global Solutions is there, they've grown there. And then behind, they have this, kind of the same, similar type use. This one will have a little more of a retail, or similar, but maybe a bit of an upgrade on the glass front of the office. But that would be a similar type uses.
So an entity to come in and maybe take two or three in a row if they needed to, depending on the needs there?
The flexibility, yes. Similar, like they would do with an office building. They don't know exactly how it'll be laid out, but there'll be a portion up front, and then there'll be a portion in the back for kind of warehousing. Warehousing, or it could be like Club V that you have over in Linden as well, where it's the volleyball facility. So typically, the tenants will kind of, they'll be built out according to what their needs are.
And these are lease-only?
Lease-only, that's correct. Yeah. Any other question?
Your elevation, obviously, this is just conceptual. I like what you're mentioning, that it's more fenestration than just tilt-up concrete on the front side, the windows. The doorways themselves, though, are kind of really flush with all that. Well, is there a consideration to create any sort of a, you know, like a overhang or any fixtures on the building, kind of designating where the entrances are?
And we're very, and I think, yes, there is. We're not married to this, but we wanted to put a concept together that kind of, at least kind of address that we're not looking for your, kind of a standard, just concrete tilt-up, throw a door in, and it wears more warehouse looking. So as in kind of having a canopy over the doors for rain or for design aspect, we're definitely open to that.
What we like to use often is articulation of something that's just not a...
Not flat, yeah. And I, we would agree, and Michael, we spoke with him, and we like this, but I think there still could be some elements there to add on.
Some fixtures that kind of create, this is, you know, the entrance, and creates that sense of articulation versus just a...
Just a flat front across. Yes, absolutely.
I think this building was put together under the mixed commercial zone. The regional commercial zone has more specific...
Do you guys like the buildings in the mix, or in the regional commercial, the brand-new stuff going up off of Pleasant Grove Boulevard? I take that as a yes. I'm just kidding.
I think it's attractive. I think it's a great product. You know, I worry sometimes we get bogged down in these zone changes, and we see an elevation, that looks good. But really, we're opening it up to a wide variety of options for you guys.
Like creativity.
Yeah.
What, we've got a few of our best sales tax producers down there. Was this noticed? How does, walk me through the noticing on this to the, to the surrounding businesses?
Yeah, let me pull up a map real quick.
Unique piece of property, though.
It is.
A little bit unique, been there for a long time, been listed for a long time. I mean, years and years, right?
So this, so whenever we put noticing together, it creates a map for us. So these were all the surrounding properties. So this, these two properties are here. So everybody within the dark shaded are those who've got, have received a notice. So everyone within 800 feet.
And have we heard anything back to the contrary?
No.
I'm not saying that they would be opposed to it, but I, you know, we want to take care of our business community. They had to follow certain rules. We want to be sensitive to that. That was really my thought, is that I want to make sure we're taking care of our existing businesses, make sure they didn't have any big qualms with it.
Yeah, so to that, to Jake's point, there's just a couple uses in here I'm not sure would be a fit in the table, such as, you know, wrecking yards or small engine machine repair.
One thing I forgot, and I apologize, those are just the uses for the mixed commercial, the PC1 and the research and business. I forgot, the uses for the regional commercial zone are actually in the zoning ordinance, not in the table. And so let me pull those up really quick.
Could you pull those up? I was looking for that.
Kind of review.
You don't like a wrecking yard?
There's a couple here that you're like, huh?
Were you thinking like that much storefront, along that front? I'm just curious which, what you kind of present conceptually, and then what actually happens? Because that's a lot of storefront.
So typically, what we want is across the front where that is a storefront, or, I mean, it could be, I mean, as in the glass, you mean?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's our plan.
So that would be their front office, where customers can come and engage.
That's exactly right.
I think this particular property, to the point there, is that this is a, similar to what's further on the west side, but this is closer to a major retailer. So it would draw more, more street traffic of people popping in there and heading over to whatever retailer is actually in there versus some of the other flex-use occupants.
And I think that's, that's kind of, as we've kind of worked with Michael, is it's, you got office on one side, you have dealerships on the other side, you have Home Depot, and trying to find a nice architectural fit there that actually fits, so it doesn't take away from our, but also try to accommodate kind of a changing market. If you, you know, you start looking at the mid-sized retail boxes, and what they've been trying, you know, you think Home Depot is a retail anchor. Well, the small, mid-sized boxes in the sense of 15,000 to 30, 40, 50,000 square feet, they're the ones that are really struggling in our market right now because, because of Amazon. And you look at, in our market, some of the most successful companies that we have right now are those that are able to take advantage of a, the internet, or Amazon, or online sales, where they still keep that small retail. But then in the back, they're able to accommodate and be able to be attractive and be able to market to the entire world, for that matter, but, you know, the United States. And so that's kind of the plan, is that, is it's, it's retail slash fulfillment. Yeah. And that's where...
I'm assuming you guys will hold these and lease them out. These aren't, you're not planning to sell. I've been involved with several, the financing of several of these Fifth East American Ford, Pleasant Grove, even down in our industrial area, they've done a couple, not quite as nice as this. I agree with you. I think there is a little bit of change in the market. And this is a use that, I think in the past, we may have gotten more industrial users. I think we may get some really high-end, even almost retail-esque type of uses out of it. So anyway, something...
So would you agree, Jake, that part of keeping it really flexible down the road as market may change again, keeping the, it looks like a commercial space, it doesn't scream, we're in an industrial warehouse?
100%.
Right.
And that's kind of, that's one reason, the designing of the site plan, where there is a need for a potential dock and grade level, is we try to squish them together where they're facing each other, rather than turning it where it's either facing Home Depot or facing, you know, to the north, where they kind of, as best we can, kind of position it a way where it's not, as, the visibility is as less, as least as possible.
And for the tenants to make sure that they cooperate with each other, because sometimes it's very difficult for one entity to be able to work against the other when you've got the trucks out there.
100%. And they kind of share the same kind of, you know, where they're bringing their trucks through and their circulation on and everything along those lines.
Hopefully, you'll think that through really well. We've, we've heard, you know, anecdotally in some places in the community where, like Randy's saying, there's not a good space or traffic pattern for people to park a big truck and unload it. You know, it causes consternation to the neighboring businesses.
And to your point, Carolyn, that is where it is designed. It won't be something, because the nice thing about where you have, able to accommodate those trucks, they don't end up on the side of the road like potentially some of your dealerships, where they're parked there in the median, and they're pulling the road, you know. This is actually, it will actually be self-contained. So when a tractor trailer comes in, they are actually, there's place for them to actually unload, and they don't need to do it off the side of the road.
Yeah, I think my biggest concern is, it is a zone change. We give them such a wide, they could do so many different uses. And I know you're pulling those up right now, Mike. What's your, I mean, at this point, at this time, is this a plan you're moving forward with fairly quickly? Is this something, hey, let's get the zone change, and maybe years down the road is when you start looking at doing it?
No, our intent is to move, now, I mean, what's going on in our construction material, I mean, to lay, I mean, right now, joy's for your ceiling, joy's, and, you know, your roof deck is about a year out, just for that, if you ordered it right now. So yes, our intention is moving forward, but we also got some supply chain issues, too.
Makes sense.
So, but, and I think when you talk about as a, the, a single owner rather than, you know, condominiumizer, one owner is able to control. Sometimes when you get into those units where there are multiple owners, sometime, then you've all of a sudden got... Sometimes when you get into those units where there are multiple owners, sometime, then you've all of a sudden got four opinions of, hey, what do we do on landscaping, what do we do on this? Where this is one owner and, and, and speaking to Kent Nieda's group, they're very well healed in the sense of, it's not something that's going to limp along. It's something that they'll, they'll, they'll have a class A project.
I, I like that they're invested too, right? They've, they own a lot of the neighboring properties, I think.
Now, in fairness to Jake, this, Kent's not with Canopy.
Okay.
Yeah, they've, they've got, they've got roots here and then they've got roots, they've done a fair amount of development in Las Vegas, but a lot of roots here in, in, in Utah County as well. Canopy is, but, oh, sorry.
Can you share with us your gross square footage that you're thinking for each, each side?
So we, we think that we end up, there's potential, so that, that site plan right there, if you, if you see where the grade goes up, it's the whole piece. So it'd be about sixty thousand a piece on, on both of those buildings. Up on top there would be a smaller building because you've got that, that topography kind of goes, goes up. And so at that point there would maybe be a smaller building there.
So you're buying from Mega Holdings?
Yes, that's correct.
That makes sense.
And they are, obviously we wouldn't be here if they weren't in support of the, the change and they've, you know, along those lines.
Did you find that use is-
Yes.
In a scenario like what Carolyn mentioned, if there were two or three uses that she's just not comfortable with in that specific site, is there anything we can do to mitigate that?
I mean, we would just go with, with what's here. If it doesn't meet one of these manufacturing uses, then they couldn't, they couldn't go in. Now, this, this manufacturing use is a lot, it's more narrowed down than what's allowed in our mixed commercial or our light industrial zone or, or something else. So lesser manufacturing uses, these are more just utilities here, wholesale trade, it's pared down quite a bit. Retail, there's, there is quite a few different retail uses you can put in that building and then a number of service type uses.
And none of these are conditional use, these are approved?
These are all approved, yes. And some public assembly as well.
Golf driving or any tires?
You know what, we can work on that.
My daughter actually, in one of Mark Wildon's buildings, she plays, she plays tournaments down there periodically in one of, in one of those units, so.
Golf?
No, volleyball. So volleyball tournament, so these buildings are used for, for a wide range.
No, no, no.
I think I've asked my questions. Generally in favor of it.
As am I.
I think that, and you'll, the applicants will attest, my, my biggest worry all the time has been making sure we're building, or building upon what, what's already there. With the, the two dealerships that are putting significant investment in right now with, with new facades on their dealerships and, and the Canopy Business Park. That, that's, that my number one concern is just making sure it's, it'll, it'll not detract in any way. Which I, which under the regional commercial zone, I, I think that's more specific in nature and, and would come up with a good design.
And I can attest to that in the meetings we've had with Michael, he's very much on the architectural side, wanting to make for sure that it fits the area. And the other thing is, one of the major landowners there is who, who Mr. Nieda is buying it from and there and favor of what's going on as well, so.
Now, my question will be something that's related, but not sure how it impacts us at all, but what we, what do we have left in our RDA that will either help or need to be sustained by this?
And it's, the RDA over there is expired, yes.
Did it expire? Okay, I, I didn't know if we had much-
There's, there's some funds left for, because we've been maintaining some landscaping over there, I'm not sure there's-
It's primarily been reserved for that, so a few years ago we, for some of those vacant properties, the city went in and put in that landscape strip and the trees. And so we're reserving some of that funds to pay for the landscape maintenance.
So we have a little bit of that.
And then as these properties develop, that's then taken care of by the property owners.
Do you have any potential users or tenants that have indicated an interest here? Are you going to pre-lease?
Probably haven't really taken it to market because it might be a little-
Preliminary.
Premature. But as in something like that, I give you, you know, based on, on the market right now, quality product like this, is there, there's a one percent vacancy in the market. There's a, there is a definite demand for this type of, of use.
There's a lot of flex that's been built throughout the valley and-
And it's, either, this is, this is, it is, the large majority of all those new buildings that are going up, like across the way in Orem, they're all pre-leased. Yeah, it's crazy. And it's kind of that flex, is kind of a lot of them are, like LaConte is one of them taking the entire building over there. Another one is American, American Craft, which is in London right now, or has been. And so they are kind of the same thing, they have a retail component and it's kind of, a lot of it is an online. That's LaConte, they do a, they're out of Japan and they do a synthetic sugar. But, so there is definite something where we talk about trending, the trends of our market right now, that's, that's where it's trending the, and I, and I think it really lends for kind of new business. Because what's happening on the internet, it's opening up, allowing business not just to be marketing, just to the, the local residents. They're able to accommodate the local residents, but then also market to, you know, well outside of their market, their, at least their geographic market.
I agree, I think that's something I'm excited about with this project. I think it'll bring in several new businesses into London and they'll be high, high level businesses, I'm excited about that.
So who's the mayor pro temp, who's running it?
I was, I'm back to you, Mayor.
No, you can finish up, we can finish up with this.
She's done a great job, by the way.
I'm sure she has.
She's done a great job.
Mike, any discussion that you could share with us since our council member that's a liaison to planning commission is not here to share with us? Some of the discussions, some of the questions, some of the things that were worked through that stick out to you?
Yeah, they, they just, the, the commission felt, a few of them felt uncomfortable with the mixed commercial zone because it had a little bit of a light industrial use. You know, allowed a few more light industrial uses, and so that's why they, they liked the regional commercial better because it had more specific design standards. The uses were narrowed a little bit more, and so that's why-
Regional commercials, a little more flexible than our general commercial.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, it's a good in-between they felt.
That's, that's how the commission felt, yes.
Unanimous on the planning commission side, though.
Yep.
Any questions or conditions that potentially came up in conversation regarding any of it?
No.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Public.
All right.
Are we in a public hearing?
We, we're in a public hearing, so if we have anyone here in the audience that would like to ask any questions, this is your time.
Hearing none, all motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion accepted, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, back to you.
So that was item number eight.
Closing the public session.
But no actions occurred.
No action yet has been taken on that.
Okay.
The ordinance.
So we still need to have an action on that.
That's right, so any further discussion among council members?
I'm good, anybody else have one? I'll make a motion if it's about time for that, if anyone have any questions or thoughts. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash O, amending the London City General Plan land use map from the commercial and research and business to mixed commercial at approximately five twenty-three west, four hundred south. As presented, noting that it'll be a beautiful building.
I'll second the motion.
All right.
Is it mixed commercial or regional commercial?
So that was for the general plan amendment.
And then we'll do this next one, yeah.
So, yeah, amending it from-
No, it's okay, we get these letter layered sometimes and-
Just to make clear, it was from, amending it from research and business and, and, so from research and business to-
And I read it exactly as it is written in our notes, so.
Let's see.
To commercial? Because it says to-
From mixed, from, from commercial and research and business to mixed commercial. Is that correct?
No, no, no.
Sorry, I, maybe from the planning commission staff report to the council when I messed up. So it should just be in the ordinance from research and business to commercial.
Okay, so as, as Michael has-
Are you on page thirty-three? Are you on page thirty-three?
Thirty-one.
Michael, maybe you're talking about page thirty-three, is that where the language is correct?
Thirty-three is item nine, correct?
Okay, that's where I'm seeing something to that effect, okay.
Oh, no.
All right.
I'm on page thirty-one in that.
Would you like to amend your motion or?
So as, so I, I can just say as Michael said, but for Kathy's benefit, Kathy, I'm going to have Michael say it one more time. Is that best?
So, yeah, it should be this, to amend the London City General Plan map from research and development to commercial.
So we're on page thirty-three. I don't know why I'm not going down, page down. I'm getting there.
So Jake, is that a, is that a friendly?
Yes, absolutely.
As long as it says what it's supposed to say, I'm not getting there, am I?
Right. All right. Okay, as, as noted, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. All right, on to the next item.
Okay, we'll go to item number nine, which is, I believe, open a public hearing.
Make a motion, open a public hearing.
All second.
We have a motion by Van, a second by Carolyn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are now in a public hearing, we were and now we're in a new one, so. And Mike, you're going to present?
They were presented jointly, unless there's any public hearing, all motion to close the public hearing.
Any public comment? Real quick, okay. We have a motion by Jake and a second by Randy to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, okay. Now, any action we need to take on that? That will come, eh?
Again, this one's just changing the zoning from planned commercial one to, and business.
This one's on page forty-nine. I'll take a stab at it. I, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash O, amending the London City zoning map from PC one and RB to MC at prop-
Sorry, this should be regional commercial.
Ah, to R-
RC.
RC, not MC. At property located at five twenty-three west, four hundred south.
Correct, I think what they're-
I'm reading off page forty-nine.
Acronyms, we got to get it right, make sure it's-
Right there.
We're good with the ABCDEF.
Yeah, the ordinance is- Yeah, the ordinance is correct.
Okay. Okay, so motion.
Second.
Second by Randy, we'll go ahead and call for any more discussion, I hope not. We'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your patience.
Passage in, man.
Thanks guys, appreciate it.
Make the pretty, make it beautiful.
Thank you.
And don't mess it up. We don't want car dealerships coming to us and saying, what'd you do?
He is joining right now, I got to start the Zoom meeting here for him, so.
Hey. Oh, okay. Juan, I think you're up, talk about secondary, item number ten, discussion item. Some fun stuff. It has all the feeling of metering.
Just a second, I got to connect Mike and Jerry, so.
So I'll start the introductions. Rick Alloy is with the Central Utah Water Conservancy District, he's a water manager. And he's going to talk to us about metering and some possible grants. And Rome Clay is a consultant and he had worked for the city before. He has done a great job of going after grants for different departments.
So he'll tell us when Mike's on and we can proceed, or?
There he is. Mike, can you hear us?
Yeah, I, I can hear you.
Yeah, so just a, a note to speak closely into your microphone and that'll help him be able to hear, so. All right, Juan.
I'm going to stay with you as long as I can, I, I'm, it's spotty coverage, so.
Well, we'll take you as long as you can, so. Okay, let's go ahead with it. Start metering water, do we get credit for when it rains against our metering number?
Do you want to sit up there and all, you can tell me when to go to the next slide or you want to sit here, wherever you want.
I'll sit here.
Okay.
Okay.
So, sorry, this is, we got Mike on here, we got to share that screen, so.
Knowledge.
Then I can start the presentation there. Okay, so secondary water system update and also part of the water conservation. So I already did my introductions. Just a very quick map of the irrigation system. We have a zone three, our main reservoir that gets the feed from this dotted line, this is the North Union Canal. From there, the water flows to the zone three, to the blue highlighted area. But it also, zone three pumps to zone two reservoir. Zone two reservoir gets its supply from zone three and also from the Alpine Aqueduct, that is property of the Central Utah Water Conservancy or CUP. And then from zone two, we pump to zone one, and from zone one, we pump up to the Canvera tank. So it's just a lot of pumping and right now, we're kind of just shuffling water as, as the need arises. So we turn pumps, we increase volumes, we do all sorts of, of maneuvering with the water to make sure we have those reservoirs full. Just a little more information about our system. This is, the chart represents our annual secondary water use comparison by years. You can see the columns has that year, and then we have acre feet at the top. I'm going to be using the twenty twenty figures right now, so just for information, one acre foot equals three hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one gallons. In twenty twenty, we used four thousand four hundred and eighty-eight acre feet, which equals one billion four hundred and sixty-two thousand gallons. Of those one point four billion gallons, to do a quick analysis of where the, how much water is being used, the best we can do is say, divide the amount of gallons by the connections that we have. So we have roughly twenty-six hundred secondary connections and that adds to about five hundred and fifty-seven thousand gallons per connection annually. Okay? Follow me, follow me in the math? Yes? Okay. Utah State University does all these studies with, with agriculture and they have a, an extension that assists the public. And what they recommend is to use one point five inches of water a week in regular conditions in northern Utah. So that is watering either twice a, a week, three times a week, but that's what they recommend. So that equals to about two hundred and seventy thousand gallons per half acre to do a fairly good maintenance, to have the, the grass and the landscaping looking good.
Is that for the season?
For the season, yeah. So you, you will use more or less, right? So as you can see, we are almost double using, using double what we need to be, 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 using to keep our, our yards looking good. So one way that we can save and preserve our water is do a two-pronged approach, do metering and do education. That way, we can say, okay, you should only be using this much, but you're using this much and you don't really need to, since we're, since we don't charge for- much, and you don't really need to, since we're, since we don't charge for pressure irrigation, all we can do is say, identify who the over-users are, and then let them know what they can do through education on how to, to make their water, our water, go be used more, more effi- more efficiently. So we are actually talking about almost two-thousand acre feet of water, with a fifty-percent reductions, or up to even thirteen-hundred acre feet of savings, it's, it goes a long ways. Any questions with that?
Can I interject here real quick?
Yes.
Juan, so, um, Weber Basin Water Conservancy District up north, they have implemented the largest scale for secondary metering, and without charging, uh, they saw about a thirty-two-percent reduction in use without charging, but just providing the information, and I think that's what Juan was kinda conveying there. But, that's, that's a realistic number for water saved. So it's not kinda like pie in the sky, that's where all the data is, what the data is showing.
How did they finance the meters?
So they financed it through rates, rate surcharges, but when I say they're not charging, they're not billing per consumption, they're doing flat rate. Yep, and then, uh, and most, the reason for that is, is that because their service area is so large, uh, they didn't want to bill a certain section per, for, based on their usage, while another section was being billed a flat rate. And so, once they're complete with an entire service area, then they start implementing billing.
The next slide?
Before I forget, Juan, at some point, will you forward this to the council, your slides?
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, little bit about our system evaluation, it's our, system was built in nineteen-ninety-two, ninety-three, so we're twenty-eight years old. It's showing its age, and the, the ditch maintenance shows that, uh, we, we keep having infrastructure leaks in the streets, and valves, uh, pipes, and then our, our pumps, this year, we upsized them to be able to meet the demand. We had a little glitch on the ordering of the right impellers. We are functioning with, uh, with that, uh, mechanical problem we had, and we're gonna have, uh, the pumps fixed hundred percent by the end of the month. What I wanna convey here is that more demand in the system equals lower pressure in the system, and then longer recovery periods for the storage basins. If we have any kind of glitch in the recovery, that reflects right away on, on the amount of water we're gonna have available for use. Uh, we also wanna talk about limited redundancy, and I'm gonna have another slide that will, will, uh, show this. Right now, we just rely on the, uh, North Union Canal and part of the CUP line, but we've seen where the North Union Canal had to be shut down for, for days at a time, and all we, all we have to, to fall back is the, the, the CUP line. Uh, also, we're, we're also working right now on a PI master plan update, the last one was done in nineteen-ninety-seven, so we're working with really old, uh, information. We're also working with the Central Utah Water Conservancy District on doing another analysis of the water loss that happens in the North Union Canal. This is due through evaporation, or, uh, leaks in the, in the pi- in the, in the canal, and we'll see what, what else we find out on where the water is going. Comparing to other Utah County cities with meter and non-meter PI systems, I did this quick, uh, analysis, and I'm using the amount of water that we are currently, just dividing that big figure of five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand gallons, and then I'm plugging in those numbers into each city that either has a metered system, or just charged by the square footage, or by the lot. So if we were in Spanish Fork, our monthly average bill for the season would be about seventy-seven dollars, Mapleton would be about hundred-and-fifteen dollars.
For just water?
For just, for just the secondary water, with the amount of water that we are.
Per season?
Per season, correct. Uh, spring bill, a hundred-and-fifty-two, and of course, we're here in Linden for the half-acre lot connection, is thirty dollars. Pleasant Grove has no meters, uh, kinda like us, we have, they have a few here and there, but they're still relying on the acreage, and you can see those, those numbers there. So considerably higher on the people that, uh, have the meters, but that's based on a very high usage. I have some friends in, in, uh, in Mapleton that do not pay that much because they don't use that much water, but that's what our bill would be, just wanted to.
Per month?
To show that comparison. What's that?
Based on, that's a per-month fee?
That's a per-month fee, yeah. Uh, are, talking to Kristen, our fee has never been raised, other than with inflationary increases, and that, that started happening in twenty-eighteen. I do have one point of clarification that I need done, because we are charging, uh, for meter water in the Anderson Farms area. But I'm not quite sure that we're charging in any other development outside of the Anderson Development, but we are required to start doing that, uh, in any development that happened after April first, twenty-twenty. So, I am not sure of this figure, this is something I came up with a little while back, but I haven't been able to get those figures. What is your understanding that I should be pursuing and charging for those developments after April first? Or keep it on the?
On the flat fee?
On the flat fee.
Is that the question, whether to keep it on a flat fee, or?
So several years ago, we adopted a fee for secondary meters that it was required by our development agreement with Ivory Homes, that they would install secondary meters as part of their project. So we adopted a fee, there's per usage, and there's a base rate, and this legislation came out, and anything, any new construction put in after April first anywhere in the city is required to have a secondary meter. Our fee schedule does not differentiate Anderson Farms versus these new meters. So our, our question is, is your perception, based on that information, that we should be charging anyone with these new meters a fee, the same as we do with those in Anderson Development? Based on strict reading of our fee schedule, I would say the answer is yes.
Yeah.
Our concern with that is we will have one or two new lots in the middle of a subdivision that will have a secondary meter, and they'll be being billed by usage, and their next-door neighbors will not. And at some point, people will be upset and frustrated over that, so. Should we be amending the fee schedule in some fashion, or do we leave it and let that ride? We're, we're unclear on that right now.
Well, I would imagine certainly, when there's a, a, a section, a community, that's, you know, maybe like what's happening at Linden Nursery, what, how is that being treated?
That would be a new development, and all those would have to have secondary meters.
Okay, so that kind of makes sense, it's a com- complete sort of project there within itself, but the question is the one-off lots.
You wanna treat it as a sub, on a subdivision basis, for example, the, the treasury?
Right, I, in my mind, that's what stands out versus maybe a subdivision would convert to this initially, but the one-off lots here and there, I hear what you're saying, Adam, that's a good question.
Even in, in commercial and industrial, though, they have secondary available, they're, are we charging them for that secondary meter, the usage? That's, that's an unresolved question.
Well.
And it's not something we need an answer for tonight, this is just discussion, but just a heads up, that's getting kinda on our mind and brought to our attention here in the last few months, is some of these newer developments that came online since April, are now ready to be built, and we're currently not building those outside of the idling developments, so.
Well, go ahead, the question is, if this is legislated, you know, down the road as a mandatory thing, we could be faced with a lot of retrofitting, too, so that's, I know, something we've talked about before.
Yeah, the meters are going in, so the secondary meters are being installed.
They're there, it's just whether we start.
Yeah, I mean, we're not.
Do we start assessing them based on usage or not?
The legislation from the state now is that we have to put them in, it doesn't say anything on whether we have to charge or not.
Correct. I think that was their intent, was that cities would be charging, and not just putting in meters and not doing anything, based on some of the discussions I heard in that legislation. But, I, I think they would be surprised if cities went to the expense to require metering, and then to be charged.
Even there was a city that had done that.
There's, like in, in Payson, where I, I live, they put them in citywide, and proactively just went ahead and did it, and then their, their program is to give a couple of years of usage, so that residents can make adjustments in their landscaping or watering habits, and then they, but they had a, an official launch, and public meetings, and a PR campaign, and so, um, there could be other cities, I don't know.
To the point of the, um, one-offs that Carolyn brought up, those home, those that pulled out those permits are highly aware that this is a potential, just like the developers would be, is that correct? I mean, this is part of this, the whole package of that, or, or is that something that we need to make sure that people who pull permits for, uh, what had been a vacant lot, and now there's going to be a home on it, that they understand that there's going to be by, by mandate by this, by the state, correct? That they have to have a, a metered, um, secondary water, uh, secondary water be metered?
The meter is, is added to their building permits.
Correct.
So it's, it's very upfront, heavy, skinny, whether or not the residents know that versus a builder, that's another question.
Well, and that happens with, I mean, that's, uh, that's, should the, the resident need, or the purchaser needs to do their due diligence, and so.
It would be interesting, I'd be curious, just looking at the data, you, you mentioned we have different users, so we have the commercial and whatnot, um, their amount of watering, is it more, less the same as a standard resident, because their landscaping may be quite different and a whole different scenario?
We have talked in the past about that there's some really significant large users of waters that can skew some of those figures on how that is.
Yeah.
Allocated, so not every home is using that.
Correct.
You're talking about their internal consumption versus their outdoor consumption, though? That, that's.
Outdoor, and primarily those are.
Just secondary.
So school yards, and.
It skews it for the rest of us.
So, um, Juan's currently working with Alpine School District, and they are looking at meter installation on several of their facilities, so that we can start tracking and knowing what that consumption is, um, and, and equate for that in these calculations. But that, that's really the biggest users, there's some churches, but the churches don't have as much landscaping as we probably would assume.
And a lot of them are going to a more zero scape.
Yeah, city parks are probably the second.
I'll, I'll touch on, on those figures, on which ones, which users. This is just kind of re- repeating what we have seen through, uh, through different announcement from the governor. The first one started on the, on the seventeenth of, uh, March, about an executive order to conserve water, then it came a second one on the thirteenth of May. Then I received notifications from the Provo River Water Users Association that our allocation was gonna be slashed to eighty percent. Then we had a third execu- executive order on June eighth. On the twenty-first, we brought to council a, uh, resolution that got approved, and we are, uh, going out and hanging flyers and educating residents. I haven't been able to see any data showing that the water user has gone down, but we're, we're doing our part.
How far, so you haven't seen anything, have we had any incidences where we're extremely low, like we were a few times in June?
We haven't seen that because we made the corrections to our, to our delivery and our pumping, so we are able to, to keep up with, with the demand right now.
And Juan, um, so as far as our, um, the water that we provide to Linden City, uh, we provided a full allocation this year, as you know. Um, I, I spoke with our assistant general manager today, if we receive less than normal snowfall and precipitation this winter, then we'll probably enter into some sort of agreements for less than full allocation. But if we receive a, a normal, or an average precipitation this winter, then we expect to deliver a full allocation next year as well.
So, that, that's one I didn't have here, CUP, and I'm glad that you're here, Rick, to clarify that. And also speaking with, uh, with the Provo River Commissioner, uh, that there's gonna be a reduction on the natural flow of, uh, the Provo River to eighty pers- from eighty percent, and it's gonna be cut to forty percent of the water that's coming down the Provo River. Luckily, Linden has enough shares that we will be able to get what we need to finish out the year, so, uh, shares do not equal acre feet. So depending on what that allocation is, we have enough shares to supply our, our demand. Uh, this is the legislature, uh, uh, report that I, that I attached in the staff report, uh, the SB one-ninety-nine, and has some water amendments to it this year. They have allocated a two-million dollar for secondary water meters for cities specific with less than five-thousand connections. Uh, Payson, uh, there's some, they can qualify for some of that, Salem, Cedar Hills, Highland, and Linden, so we have a good chance, that's on the Utah County side, and this is where Rick has a little, uh, more information than I do. Uh, it does require a fifty-percent match to be able to, to get money from them. On January first, on that same, uh, state bill, it says that by January first, twenty-twenty-two, these municipalities that meet the requirement of the five-thousand connections or less have to establish a reserve fund for, uh, metering system installation. So, this would be a good way to, uh, if we go after some of these grants, to be able to maximize our, our money that, that we might start putting towards water meters. Uh, some of the grants available, uh, for secondary water projects that we're pursuing is, uh, delivery system improvements, which cover that redundancy, uh, part that I was talking about, and this is making a connection to the Provo River Aqueduct, otherwise known as the Murdo Canal. Uh, Central Utah Water Conservancy District, uh, will be our partner on this grant, but they first have to do, uh, a water loss study on the canal, to make sure if their investment is gonna be, uh, warranted. The timing for this grant, after we conduct all of our studies and put all of our, uh, calculations in there, will be not till fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, which, you know, that's the best case scenario. Is that right, Rick?
Yeah, and, and it can span multiple years as well, so depending on when it, when it works best for the, for the city.
So one thing is making the connection to the canal, and, I mean, to the, to the pipe, and the other project is to actually get the water from the connection down to the North Union Ditch, which we're looking at, uh, doing it on four-hundred North, so it's a short distance. This year, we have in our budget three-hundred thousand to invest in this, but if it gets delayed, we might just have to either hold on to it, or try to, uh, transfer those funds to, to another grant that we can, that we can get. So Linden has two-hundred shares in the Provo River Aqueduct, but we have no connection, so we haven't been using it, and we've been paying for, for those shares every year. The other, uh, grant that's available is irrigation metering. We need good information to make good decisions, so if we're gonna do a master plan that requires, uh, enough supply and big enough size pipes to, to convey the water, then we need to know how much water we're using to, to, to be able to plan for that, so. Uh, demand amount equals infrastructure size, so we have to get a, get a hold of that information to make a good decision on what we need to, to build to. Uh, right now, we have two-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-four secondary water connections. Uh, the price tag for that, for just the meters and the automatic meter reader, reading hardware and software, is about nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The way the grants that we're pursuing, the city would be on the hook for about twenty-five percent of the cost, and then we will go after seventy-five percent grants between CW, CD, and the state, so it's a, it's a seventy-five percent off coupon that we have right now in our hand, to be able to, to move forward, and at least get the infrastructure, and then we can plan a phased approach to, to installing. And, uh, right now that we're focusing, focusing on is, uh, the two-hundred-and-sixty-eight large water users, which include the ten churches, this, this doesn't include the temple yet, four schools, and fifty-seven city connections. This, uh, this is not only parks, but it's also, uh, freeway off-ramps, all the parks along the, the commercial parks. And then we have a hundred-and-ninety-seven connections that service you. And then we have a hundred and ninety-seven connections that service users that have lots over forty thousand square feet. This one, it's ready to go, we're ready to move forward and start applying for, for this, for these grants.
Can I talk a little bit about that? So the grants from the state, I, I spoke with Shalane from Division Water Resources. They, those were available July first, however, they haven't finalized all the rules, but they're taking applications. I would suggest getting an application in sooner than later. They are trying to open that legislation up to provide or to allow for additional applications. So right now it only counties of the first and second class with city that's, sorry. Counties of the first and second class cannot qualify, but they have to have fewer than five thousand connections. So you can imagine that's not very many cities that fall within Salt Lake, Utah, Davis and Washington County that have fewer than five thousand connections. So the odds are really good that you can qualify for that state funding now. The longer you wait, the more applications that come in. Also, they're trying to change it to allow any county of any class to, to apply for that funding. So if you put in now, there's a really good chance you'll get it. That being said, it's, it's not designed to compete with district funds. However, that could change in the future depending on how many applications they get. They also have available one percent interest loans for any funding that is, that you're not able to have currently. So if that's something that you're interested in. The district funds are based on water saved and, but at a fifty percent max. So that's how the, the funding works out for us. But it's a high priority. I gave you each one of our water conservation plans. Kind of outlines the funding that we put forward to this and, and water conservation as a whole. And secondary metering is our top priority because we can see a thirty percent reduction, which is very important to us. So anyways, I'll.
So I have a question, Juan. Rocky Mountain Power, for example, I get notifications, you know, your usage is X compared to neighbor's X. It's, it's kind of an awareness. You know, they're not saying we're going to penalize you.
It's a shaming is what it is.
So one of the things we've talked about is staging this where, you know, you get the education out, you allow the people to understand, okay, what, what do you really need to use? And, and let them be stewards, wise stewards and make those decisions with the information. So has there ever been that thought where you could meter, but people have no idea what the meters, what you're using? And do sometimes people adjust behavior based on understanding, oh, my meter is.
Yeah, so that, those meters that I have there is the census technology. That also comes with other software that Rick is, has some knowledge about how you can actually.
Yeah, so all of, all of these, or the new meter technology will provide the almost identical information to what you would see on your Rocky Mountain Power. So it could send you real time or near real time information of your water usage. It could provide leak alerts to you if you, if you sign up for that type of alert. Send you an email or a text message depending on the service. But the, the reality is, is that you're, you're a hundred percent correct. Without even billing, cities, especially in Weber Basin service area, just with getting that information. And the information that's provided is this is what you should be using based on your lot size, based on the amount of green space you have. And they make some assumptions too, that maybe it's all along, right, to be generous. And by just showing you this is what you should be using, that's where they see their reduction. They're not charging, they're not. The other thing that they might do is they might say, well, this is what you would pay under a normal fee structure. That tends to work really well. The neighbors thing works really well. Saratoga Springs, you know, looking at, okay, this is how well, you know, people of a similar lot size are doing. You know, do you get a frowny face if you're using more water or a green smiley face if you're using less water? And so there's some social norming that goes into motivating people. And that's without people actually having to pay anything. They, they want to do well, we're competitive by nature and so we want to do well. We also react to just the idea that we might be spending a lot of money even if we don't have to.
I've lived in Linden for twenty-three years and I think I've paid ten bucks every month for twenty-three years. And I love it, it's great. And I don't pay much attention when water runs down the street or I'm over watering or what. I just don't worry about it because it's not a big deal to me. But when my culinary water bill jumps up a little bit, I'm walking around the house trying to find out where do I have a leak? And so ignorance in this, I mean, it's not, that's kind of a rude word. But, you know, we just don't know how much water we're using. We, when we crunched all these numbers, we were just guessing. Because all we know is how much we're using per year and how many users are connected. We don't know what any single person is using.
So, so we did some polling and the average consumer, or sorry, the majority of consumers feel like that they would be average users of, of secondary water. And, and that's not accurate. So once billing or once metering comes in, the average user uses thirty to fifty percent more. And those numbers are pretty clear. And so, you know, even people that think that they're doing the right thing, they think that they're efficient, efficiently using water, it's just a guess because they just have no idea and nothing to compare it to.
Okay. The third grant that is available out there is for smart irrigation, grant for city parks. So like I was telling you, there is fifty-seven services that operate four hundred and sixty-nine valves in all the green spaces that the, that the Parks Department looks at. There's also a Central Utah Water Conservancy District grant. And it covers up to, and you can probably talk about more of this, Rick, on what that's available for.
Yeah. So another thing that's a high priority for the district is ensuring smart irrigation on all the parks. We've been working with many cities for several years. And this is where they're seeing, as far as city use, this is where they're seeing the biggest reduction in use. By putting in smart controllers, not only do they have access to shut down all city irrigation just with one button. So if you have a really big rainstorm, which we were fortunate to have a little one today, but normally we haven't seen those in a while, but you're able to shut it off right away. The other really big thing is that if there is a leak in a park or a sprinkler head that's stuck on, it can send you an alert to say, hey, you've got a problem and it'll shut it down automatically. Sandy City, I've been working with them on installing these for, for several years now, about five years now. And they said that the biggest benefit for them was just a reduction in complaints. You know, nobody's calling them to tell them that they've got a sprinkler head broken in a park. Nobody's calling them to complain that there's irrigation running while it's raining because they can just go in and change it right away. And so this is something that we feel like is, is very important because it's a lot harder for a city to lean on their residents to reduce water use, especially in a year like this year where there's a drought, when people see a lot of use in city parks. And, and I'm not saying, I don't want to say misuse it's, but you know, this way that it can help, you can help by saying, you know, we've made a lot of improvements. These are things that we're doing to help control the city's use of water. And it, and it's, it's a time saver as well. It would probably take your, your parks lead probably two days to go around to each controller to manually shut them all off. And then two days to turn them back on. Not feasible if there's a little bit of shift in, in weather. Same thing, you know, it starts out cool. And usually they just have to turn them on for the hottest day of the year because they don't have time to go back around and adjust them for the season and then taper them down in the fall. It's just not realistic. But with smart controllers, they're able to do that right away. And so we've incentivized fifteen hundred dollars per controller and then fifteen hundred for the, the master valve that would automatically shut them down if there's a leak. And this is something that we invest in very heavily. We've had a lot of really good response. Most of the churches, the LDS church chapel buildings have, have switched over. A lot of the school districts and most of the cities are, are going this way. But we invest about a half a million dollars into our grant funding for these every year. And so we're happy to give that, that money to Linden City.
And then the question is why, why now? Because it's a drought year and there is a lot of publicity. Grant funds are available first come and first served. But like Rick was saying, we're part of an identified priority area according, also according to our size. And then in the future, the grants might be harder to obtain because there's going to be more competition. And then I just prepared a few of the other programs that the Central Utah Water Conservancy District and the state are working on. And some of those goals include a nineteen percent reduction of water in the Provo River Basin by twenty thirty. There is, they have a lot of outreach and education in the district. They also work on a water efficiency ordinance that Eagle Mountain and other in Salt Lake County have adopted as part of our how to, is this how to landscape your yard?
Yeah, do you want me to talk about that a little bit?
Are we doing on time? Okay. Alrighty, and the, the, what I'm after here is how to proceed. I'm, I'm at the point where I, I can go apply for these grants and I have some of the money available in the water reserve, in the water fund that I just have to reallocate from the connection to, to the Murdock Aqueduct or switch it over to, to maximize and try to get some of these meters. And that's just, I'm just asking for your.
You have a lot of questions. I mean, metering, those that have been newly installed, do we start charging? Do we start metering the grants? System wide, are we going to start a process where we're going to start requiring or retrofitting everything? I'm not sure how everyone feels about that, but I think we need to have that discussion. A little bit more, you know, and do it quickly because, you know, so we can give you some direction.
I can bring this back up into our next council meeting with some kind of a proposal.
Yeah, Mayor, do you feel, Council Mayor, do you feel that the going after the grants to change our own city manual timers access some of the grants through the CUWCD would be prudent to jump on right away just to?
Just to make application, I guess.
Especially the, start the application process since they have opened it and it is a first come, first served. That not only yours, but the state two million dollar pot as well. I would hate to see a delay and then things are getting allocated and we miss the opportunity.
Jake?
And an application certainly does not mean that you're required to do the work, right? So.
Commit funds, but at least see what, what we can obtain from it.
I saw Heath earlier, did he have to step out? Jake, you're working with Heath, Heath and Parks and Rec, but I know Heath has talked a lot about, that's one of his agendas is, is at least in our own city parks as well.
I've been with him and the staff and the sprinkler guys for two or three hours and went through all these. And they're going to do it again this week.
Right.
But, I mean, to be honest, they're just overwhelmed fixing repairs and stuff. And there's no way they can really progressively manage these like if there's a storm. And so with, the way this works, they can just, someone can sit at their desk in the office and program all this and it just kind of does its own thing.
Yeah, we've talked about that over the years and all new things we've wanted to go to those and have been. I think I'm for sure in favor of all of those for the parks and looking at the grants. If you would send us like you'd agreed to these, this information so we can look at it. Certainly one of the challenges we're going to have in Linden, longtime residents know that their bill was, they were promised ten dollars a month no matter what they used. Regardless of what was told in the beginning, that is the perception and that is going to be a battle for us for sure.
And some turned in water shares to have that connection.
I had a discussion with my next door neighbor and it was not pretty.
So we will get a lot of that.
Water shares and stuff. But I, I look, I was, lived there as long as he has and I did all the same stuff. And it's not the same as it was twenty-three years ago. The growth, all the stuff that's going on, it's a different time and a different day and technology and all that stuff. Plus just installing meters doesn't mean you're charging. You just don't have any data to base anything on.
Right.
Once you, once you install meters.
People know what's coming.
Eventually you're gonna have to.
Yeah, it's gonna happen.
Twenty-five cents on the dollar or you can pay full price later, but eventually it's gonna have to happen.
Is there a state deadline on their grant, you know?
So the latest that I've heard is that there will probably be some appropriation of the Rescue Relief Act.
The ARPA funds.
ARPA funds for secondary meters. That, those funds have a deadline of three years, they have to be spent in three years. The best guess right now is that if they put any money, if the state puts any additional money for this, for secondary meters, that those who don't, don't take advantage of it within the three year timeframe, and it has to be spent, like the projects have to be completed in that three years, that they'll, that that's when the requirement will hit is after that, after those three years are up. Right now, oh, sorry.
As I was gonna say, who installs these mi, meters typically? On an existing home, not new construction, it's been there for thirty years.
Yep. There, it's kind of a mixed bag, but most cities prefer to have their own water departments install them in the off season. So it saves on cost. They're usually a little bit slower during that time period anyways. And they're able to go out and do it with, with very minimal intrusion to the, to the front yard. I mean, there's, it's really simple for them to do that. Some cities are paying their staff overtime to do it because it's cheaper to pay them overtime than it is to hire a contractor. Some cities are hiring contractors to do it. So it just depends on what works best for your city. But most cities have found that it's easiest to do that in the off season when the secondary system shut down. They've got some time to do it.
Payson hired a contractor and they did it year round. With about five thousand connections, I think it took them about a year and a half.
Okay, that's all I got.
We good? So you're gonna get the application in for funding?
So I'm, do you want me to proceed with the?
For sure.
Submit applications? And this is just a quick picture of my house.
Hang on really quick, Juan. Submit an application for the parks.
Application.
For the parks.
Yeah, not the parks.
I think the rest of it, I think we need more.
The state one, the, the smart meters, the smart meters through CUPCD.
So those are, those are not grant applications. The money is guaranteed until it runs out. And so they have to be purchased first and then we just reimburse them. It's just a reimbursement, it's not an application.
Oh, so that would entail a whole budget adjustment potentially?
With the parks, parks funds?
Okay, alright.
So and then you need more discussion on the, all the meters for the rest of it.
And we need Heath, we need to loop Heath in there.
What's that?
Loop Heath in on that session.
Heath in the sprinkler stuff, but the meters, you've, I mean, they've encouraged us twice to apply.
Yeah, and you can apply without a commitment of any funds.
Then apply, go ahead and apply and then we can cross that bridge when we.
Pull it if you want to, but.
Let's get our application in.
It's good to get in the queue. Really quick, clear, everybody wants us to apply for the meters? Is that correct?
I guess with the.
If that information is correct, that we do not have to move forward with it.
Doesn't oblige us, we get our application in.
I'm, I'm with Jake on that. As long as we have the opportunity for discussion and then we can do.
Which we do, that's what they said.
You okay with that, ma'am?
Yes, just as we've discussed it.
And is Mike still on?
Part of my, I want to make sure it's very clear because by submitting an application, we are committing that we have a twenty-five percent match is what I'm assuming.
Well, I would think that we discuss it before we click send.
So I want to make sure that, that that's.
So are we saying we're just, we're, we're requesting that it's filled out?
We ramp up to it, but we don't click send until we discuss.
Okay, let me bring some clarity. You said we can make the application, it doesn't commit us. If we get approved, then at that point in time, we have to say we have twenty-five percent of the funds and we will expend them, right?
For the district, once we receive an application, we'll review the application and then we will determine an exact amount. So we, we have to know what the total cost of all the meters would be. That's parts labor, everything. So that requires a little bit of discovery on, on Linden City's part to do that. We, we're not, you know, the way that our grant funding works is once you start spending the money, we reimburse the money. There's a contract that will be put into place before anything, any work is done. There's a contract that will be put into place before anything, any work is done. So the grant application just starts that contracting process. If you don't do the work, it doesn't matter. You don't have to sign that contract. The same thing with the state, the Division of Water Resources. They're going to have a contract. You can't even start work until that contract is signed. So for you, by submitting the application, it's that, all that's saying is that there's interest. It's going to start the state's process of saying, okay, this is how much we can reasonably allocate to this. They're going to provide a contract and agreement.
And then we'll decide whether that works for us.
Yep.
So I think we're, I think we're okay.
Are you worried that it's committing us further beyond that?
Most of the grants that I've administered require a letter of commitment on the match as part of your application.
And this is?
Which we have the funds for and we can say, yes, we're submitting this and if we get awarded, we reject it. But I hate for them to allocate funds that we're, we have no intent to use.
So Juan, I would imagine, like he mentioned, you're going to have to go decide the scope of what we're going to go after in the first place because it obviously wouldn't be, it's a big elephant. So we'd, we'd focus in and you'd have to determine that and present that.
Prepare that for you.
Mike, you still with us? Are you okay with that?
Ye- yes, yes, I am. I, I, I just got good reception again. We just got off the Salmon River. My question is this. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Oh, Mike, Mike, you may have answered this question already. How much money are we talking about for the meter, metering?
So to purchase the actual meters is about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we would get the pricing to, to get the installation done. But just the hardware, it's about nine hundred and fifty to do the entire city.
Okay. And then we would have to match twenty-five, oh, put twenty-five percent of that in, right?
Roughly.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I'm fine to move forward if it doesn't commit us to anything right this moment.
If we could get some more information, I was told, I've always been told that Linden made some great decisions thirty years ago when we implemented our secondary water system and that frankly, we have more than most cities. We're very blessed in that situation. I have a hard time with the state blanket covering all cities have to meter when some cities have more water than others. If you can help me understand where we are at from a secondary system, I spoke to our, our water master today, who says that we've got quite a bit of water, that we're frequently sending water to Utah Lake when there's overages, which happen frequently. Help me understand all of that information so that I can make good decisions.
And on top of that, I know that historically we've had to, even recently, we've had to prove to the state, the states come after us trying to ask us to, to prove that we are using the waters. Hence, they'll, they'll take it from us. So we've had, we've, we've had to prove to the state that we have what we have before they want to take it.
Benefit use.
Very good. We are very good at filling out our forms and dotting our i's and crossing our t's. And I think Norma Brown was one of them that would historically do that, make sure everything was in place all those many years ago and, and water masters since. And we've been very blessed with good qualified ones. But yeah, to that point, I think some history on that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll get you all of our water sources, what that equates to actual water in the ponds as far as, as part of our water going down to be wasted because it was poorly, poor planning on who was going to get the water that day. And if there wasn't a, somebody to take it, the water was dumped.
That's good, yeah.
Right. So, but that's.
Yeah, there's more to talk there.
That one seems to be circulating around lower Linden. I've probably had three or four residents say, oh, what are we even talking about? We're sending so much water to Utah Lake. And I said, God, I don't even know. I, that's.
We have very good data that we can show you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And follow up on the Provo River too, because, you know, that, that water can be shared somewhere else where they can receive it. It's not, we're paying for it, but we can still make good use of it if we don't use it in our system. And then I have a broader question. I'm told that seventy, seventy percent of the water used in Utah is agricultural.
So can I?
Is that correct?
Can I respond to that real quick?
Yeah.
So it's, it's higher than that.
It's higher than that.
About eighty, eighty percent of the water that's diverted water goes to agriculture. There's something very dangerous about this statement that you made. And that's that, that's eighty percent, but that's not where, we can't necessarily bring that water to Linden City, for example. So if you look at Utah County, it's completely reversed. You look at Salt Lake County, it's completely reversed. The amount of agriculture in Utah County is less than twenty percent. And so, you know, we always get harped on to conserve water for agriculture. We're doing that. They're the first ones to cut. So this year, when there's a drought, we get our water here in Linden City, we have the highest priority. They cut, we cut our deliveries to agriculture before we cut, cut our deliveries to Linden City. So they, they're the first ones to get axed and, and they lose their livelihood when that happens. And, but if they lose their water in certain areas, you think of Sand Peak County where agriculture is much higher, you can't just pull Sand Peak County water over to Linden City. So we have to be kind of careful with this. So as a state as a whole, might be eighty percent, but.
Yeah, but it's, it's the overall water plan for the state of Utah. And if we're talking about putting a pipe through the ground to get into Cedar City and St. George area from Lake Powell, I mean, we're, we're finding ways to move the water if we need to move it at a very cost.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, do we have to make a motion to change the order of what we're doing tonight?
We've done that once.
Oh, you already did it?
Can we, can we?
This is a pretty fast item. I think you can tackle this in five minutes.
Does Van have, do you have?
I'm comfortable with this one next to him.
So we're on number eleven then? We're doing that one?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to open a.
Motion to open a public hearing?
I'll second.
Second by Carolyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mike, make it fast.
Okay. We have the applicants here from Impact Signs and Holiday Oil. Kevin Anderson and Scott Wagstaff, they, Holiday Oil has the new convenience store under, under construction there on the corner of Geneva and seven hundred north. They would like a price, digital price sign, which our ordinance currently does not allow. We allow digital signs only in the T-zone, which is along I-15 corridor. That's five hundred feet on, you know, on the sides of the freeway. So we've come up with a new sign type called gasoline price.
Creative.
Sign. So it'd only be specific to convenience stores. Were you going to say something there?
No, I'm just, it's convenient.
Yeah. But we, we know how the council is, you know, that you've been approached before and we wanted to limit this specifically to gas stations. So it would allow six square feet per price area. I gave you a bunch of examples in the, of other cities and what, you know, they, they kind of have a range. So it would be permitted for monument signs only, six square feet. The, the changeable copy can't flash. It can't scroll. It can't fade in and out or show video. It can only be allowed on arterial or collector streets. So Holiday Oil could output one on both seven hundred north and Geneva because those are both collector streets.
And can both of the other two existing.
Yep, that is correct. Yes. And so with that, they also have to have an automatic dimmer to adjust the brightness of the sign in the evening. We didn't call out a specific standard here, but there is a foot candle requirement already in our ordinance. So with that, I'm, I would be glad to go through additional detail. I, I know the representatives would be here as well. You can see the, the two signs that Holiday Oil would like to install. And, and here's the typical signs that they want to put in. Normal monument sign with the, the gas pricing below.
With the gas price fixed at those, those rates, right? Two eighty-eight looked good.
Eight eighty-eight, no good.
It's pretty straightforward. I mean, other cities have these, it's on, on the collector or arterial, you know, it's, it's pretty.
Making it specific to gas stations. We're not opening a can of worms for unintended consequences. I'm with Van. I'm very comfortable with this.
And I know that we're kind of rushing through this. I just think staff, it's a very well put together ordinance and, and information that's in our staff report. This is something that I, I always like when we change our sign ordinance in a way that helps businesses and this is very needed, very well done. Very excited about this one.
Hopefully it'll help consumers as well, you know?
Right.
Go ahead, Van or Mike.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in. The Planning Commission spent a lot of time on this and asked a lot of relevant questions and, and pretty much grilled these gentlemen. And Planning Commission, I think, has covered a lot of the concerns and the bases that you might have. But I think that the staff report was pretty clear on what their thoughts were. So I agree with Randy. I think it's a, it's a good thing. I'm, I'm for it.
Hey, Council, any more questions? We can open it to the public. Any comments?
This would require all the same requirements of what we have as our monument signs now. That's, I'm pretty sure, I just wanted to clarify.
Within that square footage requirement.
Okay. I don't want to hear any public comments.
It was unanimous in the planning commission after they talked about it.
Yeah, it was.
Okay. Someone want to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Jake. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
It's pretty easy.
So you want to make a motion?
We still have motions.
Haven't voted yet.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance amendment twenty twenty-one dash nine dash O, approving the amendment to LCC eighteen dot zero three dot zero three zero relating the, to gasoline price signs slash impact signs as presented.
I'll second.
You have a motion by Jake, second by?
Motion.
We'll give it to Mike. You got the second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously, thank you.
There you go.
Okay, we are now moving into closed session. Motion. Someone make that motion?
We have to take a roll call of how that works. Motion to close those. No, we have the, no, we don't close as we. He has motion to go into a closed session.
Yes.
And then that needs to be a roll call vote.
Do we need to second and then a roll call vote?
Yes.
I'll second.
Carolyn, let's do a roll call.
Van Broderick, yes.
Carolyn Lundberg, aye.
Randy?
Randy Powell, aye.
Jake Hoyt, aye.
Mike?
Mike Benchery, aye.
All right, we are now in.